Councilwoman Lingle.
Here.
Rouge.
Here.
Durham.
Right.
Mayor Potam, Vice Chair Martner. Mayor Chair Siminski.
Well, dear God Almighty Father, we pause in this moment and stand before you in gratitude for all we see and everything we cannot see exists because of you alone and it comes from you. You have provided us with numerous blessings, our family, our friends, our community, our country, the freedoms we enjoy to gather as we do this night, and that we've been able this day to exercise our freedom to vote and select our leaders, all the while knowing that promotion really comes ultimately from you. Calling upon you reminds us of our smallness and your greatness. You are the Creator, we are the creature; you are the shepherd, we are the sheep of your hand. Remind us that when we attempt to rule without you and live outside your design for our lives, life does not go well. So may we surrender to you. As we come before you, we are reminded that we are imperfect people, but you are a perfect God. You are wise, and we are not, so grant us your wisdom, this night and the days ahead. Watch over our community, be with those in need, and may we be an extension of your love and your kindness to others. Use our lives to add value to the lives of others. Help us to be supportive of those who serve and protect us, our military, our police, our fire, and those willing to go into harm's way on our behalf. And be with those unknown heroes of our city, who with no fanfare, no need for recognition, provide care for others and make a difference one life at a time. May your hand of grace and peace be upon our mayor, our city administrator, our city council, our city staff, and all our city employees. May your grace be shed upon our land, I pray. Oh God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just have a couple of things. City Clerk Alvarez provided you a revised copy of the minutes of the meeting on October 19th concerning a correction to the action vote reported on the top of page seven under public hearing, item 10, general plan update. The minutes were corrected to note that the motion was made by Mayor Siminski rather than Councilmember Lingle. This was the action to certify the final EIR for the general plan update, Phase One update. I'd also like to take this opportunity to announce that the city attorney, Joe Panoni, will be conducting the state mandate ethics training on Tuesday evening, November 7th, I mean November 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00, that is November 9th, in the council chambers. And this training is mandated for city councils, city administrators, department heads, as well as other designated employees, and the city commissioners, committee members, and board members. And that is all I have to announce tonight. Thank you.
I've been asked by several of the council members to take a quick break at 20 after. Pardon? At 15 after, so we can get outside.
We're going to go 16. 16 now, we're going to go 17. 17, we're going to go.
All right. So we will be prepared to take a break right in the middle of maybe the next item when it comes up. Next item on the agenda is the discussion on the Caltrans Road Safety Improvement Project that -- pardon? That's where it comes after. This is one of the council requests, so that will come after that. Ms. Barcelona? Do you want to introduce Lady Bean to present this? And, sorry?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, this is a council request item presented by Public Works Director Larry Bean on the Lawfriesman Road Safety Improvement Project.
Mayor Siminski, members of council, members of the public. At a earlier meeting, Councilmember Lingle and a majority of the council requested that a draft letter be prepared, requesting that Caltrans change the project from a roundabout to on-demand traffic signal. I prepared a staff report that quoted fairly accurately Caltrans reasoning for picking a roundabout over a traffic signal. Caltrans did hold a public hearing or meeting in this city hall on July 16th, 2008, and April 22nd, 2009, to answer questions regarding the roundabout and how it would accommodate trucks, farm equipment, et cetera, and I think they answered all those questions. Caltrans' primary reasoning for picking this roundabout over a traffic signal is that it reduces speeds and it causes the types of collisions to go from broadside, which are very injury-prone type collisions, to ones that are merging type, and it speeds from 25 to 35 miles an hour, they're mostly sideswipe. And that will stop the severity of the accidents at that intersection, they hope. At the time when they compared the projects, there was an estimate made for the construction cost along with the right-of-way acquisition. It didn't include, these costs did not include, the supplemental support that Caltrans provides, such as the planning, the design, the environmental documents, the contract administration when the project is being constructed, the inspection and testing that takes place during construction. At the last Caltrans meeting, they estimated it was about $3 million to build the roundabout and about $4 million to build the on-demand traffic signal. Some of the differences in cost were that the right-of-way needed for the traffic signal was about double the right-of-way required to build the roundabout, so they had to buy more right-of-way. Since the project has got, Caltrans has picked the roundabout, the project has gone into more complete design, and in the funding document, Caltrans shows about $5.1 million for the total project cost. Since the project is very far along in the design phase, in fact, Caltrans plans to put this out to bid next April, April 2011. There is one consideration to make before you send this letter. Caltrans staff worked very hard to get a very, very competitive funding for this project. It's called shop funding. It's State Highway Operational and Protection Program. Very competitive money throughout the state. They're far into the design, they're acquiring the right-of-way. The downside of sending this letter and convincing them that we should have a traffic signal is that the project could be delayed. The document that funds the project does call for a roundabout. If it's changed to a traffic signal, it could quite likely stop the funding. Someone else, Monterey County, Ventura County, San Luis County, someone else could take the money, possibly, while we wait to have it redesigned. And then, Caltrans again is out there trying, District Five, competing again to get the shop funds for this safety project. That's the downside, if you choose. There was some discussions and phone calls and emails about when these price comparisons were calculated compared to the funding dollars. I don't think that should be our argument here, is how Caltrans estimates the cost of a project. I think the important part, does Lampoke City Council want to ask Caltrans to build a traffic signal instead of a roundabout? That's what the argument should be centered upon, not the price. I'm finished. If you have any questions, I'd try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any questions, Mr. Bean, at this time?
I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your opinion, you're an engineer, right? Are you a traffic expert?
Well, I'm a civil engineer and I work in traffic engineering. I've never designed a roundabout.
Okay. Given your expertise, what is your opinion as far as a roundabout versus a traffic, as far as, I mean, do you agree with the Caltrans suggestions? That's the bottom line.
Well, I agree that a roundabout would reduce the speed to 25 to 35 miles an hour and the severity of the accidents would be reduced. I think that's a very valid point. There are many cul-de-sacs in Europe that Caltrans has studied and has data on it.
So the severity of the accidents would be reduced?
But the question for you is, or the members of the public that tell you what they want, is, yeah, every car that heads to Beulton now will slow down to 30, 35 miles an hour to go through the roundabout.
Okay.
On the other hand, only a few would get delayed at the traffic signal, but they would stop and they'd be dead stopped for a period of time. So it's two completely different designs.
Right. My next question is, what is the likelihood? Do you know by experience the cases where a city goes in and says, "We would like to see something else," and that basically takes the funding elsewhere? I mean, is that just a speculation on your part, or is that actually has happened?
It's a possibility, but I have seen in my years working with SB CAG and projects, when a project is delayed, the funding can be pulled. This is funding that's voted on by the CTC, California Transportation Commission, and it is a possibility when the project is delayed for some period of time that it could be funded. Funding could be pulled. The likelihood of that, I couldn't predict. We'd have to have that discussion with Caltrans.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lingle.
Actually, I would rather have public comment first, and I'll make a comment.
No more questions or comments up here. Let me make my comments right now, and then we'll go to public comments, because two months ago at a conference, there were some architects that were soliciting city business, and they were traffic engineers, and they designed roundabouts, among other. They're one of the largest traffic engineering firms in the state. And I stopped and talked to the architect there for some time about the roundabouts. And he told me that they're being used all over the state. Matter of fact, he sent me a brochure, and there's a list here of about 22 places where they've designed the roundabouts. And they have said that in at least six of these cases, they took signals out and put the roundabouts in, the same kind of signals that we're asking for, and that the number of injuries was reduced because of that. They said that people don't like roundabouts, because you go into a roundabout and it's an uncomfortable situation, and people would rather talk on their cellphones, eat their hamburgers, put their lipstick on, or whatever, while they're driving down the highway. And they can't do that if they go into a roundabout. They have to be aware of the situation around them, slow down, and go through the roundabout safely. But he said that the statistics, they're doing it all over the state. I have the brochure, if you want to look at it, the different places where they have been installed, some of them, most of them in areas outside of the main part of the city, Redding, Porterville, Anderson, Rockland, Fresno, Santa Clarita, Lindsay, Angels Camp, Lysia, and Oroville, are the ones that they were involved in. And this man made a rather compelling case for putting them in, when he said that, if you look at some of the ones where they discuss them, Bob, they talk about actually replacing signal lights in the package he sent to me. So, I'm not a traffic engineer, the man was absolutely right. I'm paying much more attention, because I don't just coast through a roundabout, I have to pay attention. If I was talking on a cellphone, I certainly wouldn't be doing it as I was going through a roundabout. If I was eating a hamburger or drinking a cup of coffee, I'd put it down when I go through, huh? Or putting on my lipstick, even. I would put the lipstick down and pay, and put both hands on the wheel when I went through a roundabout. But he says that the fact that it does that is what's saving the lives. And he said that statistically, the same number of accidents occur, but as Mr. Bean reported, he said the accidents that do occur are sideswiped with just a little bit of damage, instead of T-bone, where somebody has always gone through and just forgot that the light changed red, because it's always green, and went right through and hit somebody broadside. He says the number of injuries and fatalities are way down where these things have been introduced. Now, that's one man's opinion, it's his job to design them, but I'm not ready to put my judgment above that of the Caltrans engineers who have hired people and have studied this and looked at the results around the state, and say, "No, by the seat of my pants, I feel like I want to be able to drive through it 60 miles an hour without slowing down, so let's put in the..." So, let me stop with that, and we'll take our break, and then go outside and see if that launch goes, and then call it back and ask for public opinion, or public comment on this issue. I was saving you from some young lady coming up saying, "Oh." Okay, we'll, our meeting's back to order, and we'll open public comment at this time. Anyone like to speak on the item before us? State your name.
Wayne Hohmdog, councilmembers and mayor and all. The interesting thing on the roundabout is that in 2008, when they made the presentation, it was almost a foregone conclusion it was going to be a roundabout. Caltrans made the decision back then, they just kind of put it out every time for us to discuss. Concern most I ever coached and everybody else has, that's a straight road coming from San Onofre Valley through Beulton coming into Lampoke. Now, you've got semi-trucks, a lot of the trucks is coming in town, they make as high as 45, or 50, or 60 a week in hauling vegetables out here. These are big trucks, and now they've got to slow down and go around that. I don't know how many will roll over, if they will or will not. But I think it's something you need to look at as a council, is it a benefit to the city of Lampoke to have a roundabout there? We do know if they'd have made that intersection right, instead of coming in at an angle, if they'd done it straight coming in like it used to, there wouldn't be anywhere near half the accidents. The other thing that came up in the 2008 is that there was extra money for that intersection because it had so many wrecks at it. And the wrecks are because of people coming in at an angle and going out, and you can't see very good at that intersection. So, I don't know what your letter says, but as an individual who drives that road and has drove a lot of roundabouts, if you're in Santa Maria or Santa Barbara going around, it's a pain in the rear to go through a roundabout.
John Lindsay of Lampoke. Just a couple of thoughts. If you recall back when the traffic consultant was here discussing the circulation element, they basically said it was a bad idea because it reduces traffic flow. Typically, these roundabouts are used on 45 mile an hour and lower streets, not on 55 mile an hour highways. This one is particularly problematic because of what Mr. Hohmdog just talked about, which is the fact that you have loaded trucks coming out of Lampoke, and at the bottom of the hill, they're decelerating to 15 to 20 miles per hour, and then they have to try to pick up that speed going back up the hill. So just for fun, the other day, when this came up, I took one of my tow trucks and I loaded the biggest thing I could find in the back, and I went out there, and at the intersection, I slowed down and pulled up short and waited till the traffic was gone. As I approached the intersection, I was at 15, and I was at 48 at the top of the hill, wide open. So, it's quite an impediment to traffic. The other thing I would point out is that the root cause of the problem there is the obscured left, or the obscured obscurity caused by the right turn lane. Now, I got after Caltrans when this first came out, and I made some drawings for them on an alternate intersection plan, and I also made some drawings on some short-term changes. What they did was, they put a crosshatched area for the right turn lane coming off of westbound 246, which then allowed them to move the stop sign line out, I think it was 22 feet. And I checked with the highway patrol this morning on the accidents for this year there. Typically, we were having one serious, high-injury accident a year, sometimes two. So far this year, we've had one cut-and-scrape accident and two no-injury accidents. So what that small change has done is it's reduced, it's increased the visibility, because cars are further out, so when they are, we are colliding out there now, they're at lower speed, because people are getting on their brakes when they see somebody pulling out. The real solution to this is to install a new right turn lane immediately to the right of the current westbound right turn lane, and convert that right turn lane into an island, basically. And that would allow somebody sitting at the stop to see more than 400 feet up the road, they'd have a 400-foot clear view, because every single accident at that intersection that we looked at over a 10-year period was somebody coming out of Parisima Road and getting broadsided. And by creating that clear view, it eliminates that. Caltrans estimated the cost of that would be $250,000. However, they said it might not be the perfect fix. Well, I think in view of what's transpired since just moving those lines, it's a pretty good fix, and there's no perfection on earth. And I would rather have one accident every 10 years than 10 or 12 a year from roundy-round accidents. And obviously, being in the towing business, I'd make a lot of money out of 10 or 12 fender benders, but I really don't want to see that. So, I would ask the council in the strongest words to tell Caltrans, "No, we don't want this," and, you know, it might be valuable to ask our traffic consultant from the general plan to phrase the letter, because he might be able to put some more teeth into it. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name's Mark Bouskaren. I have had a little bit of experience with a roundabout in Palmdale, and I believe it was 45 or 55 miles an hour, good-sized roundabout. You do have, it is a traffic calming device, I suppose, but basically, with the economy the way it is right now, I think we need to look at cost-effective ways, if possible, if it's outside of our hands. I would like to say that roundabouts, I think, are probably not a way to go as a citizen of the city. Slowing down there is not my choice. So if there was a way we could get rid of that road, put a cul-de-sac there so that people can't come out onto the freeway, have to go to Mission Gate Road and come up by the mission, that would be my preferable way of doing it. However, just my two cents. Thank you very much.
Bouskaren. Anyone?
Joe Tripp. I didn't do all my homework on this one, but it seems to me I got the agenda, but I don't have the, I did look at the internet, but the report, and I missed the staff report because I was driving here. But I guess my sort of thoughts over, you guys took the intermission, and I heard a few people talking and the previous comments. I guess my sort of viewpoint on it is, is from what I understand from the staff report, it was $4 million roughly for a roundabout. I might be wrong on that, but like I said, I don't have it with me. And it was $3 million for a stop sign, but there was no sort of information on leaving it the way it is. And then there seems to be some talk, like I said, I missed all the staff report, or what was said here tonight before the issue came up for public comment. There was some sort of discussion on a certain amount of money being given by the state or whatever for this or that. And in this economy, I think that I have to kind of reflect Mark's comments, that just because the state's giving the money or something like that, and if we don't spend it, we'll lose it, you kind of got to look at the overall economy of the United States, the different of California, and if you can save some money, not to say we couldn't consider a roundabout or a stop sign or something John was talking about earlier, later on down the road, but it seems like we should probably consider a third option in leaving it the way it is, or maybe for a couple of years, and not be so concerned about, "Oh, if we don't spend a certain amount of money that we're going to get from the state or whatever, then we'll lose it forever." And that's the kind of thinking that gets us into this economic problems we have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Closed public comment period. If I remember the figures correctly, Mr. Tripp, it was the other way around. It was $1 million more for a traffic light than it was for the roundabout, not $1 million less.
How much would keep it the way it is?
Okay. You just stated a figure there. We'll bring it back at this time. Mr. Lingle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you are correct. Report does state that the estimate for the on-demand stoplight is $4 million, the roundabout is $3 million. However, in further follow-up, the $3 million for the roundabout was only for the construction cost, in looking at the total cost of the roundabout, as according to the Caltrans budget, is $5.5 million, not the $3 million.
And there is no figure for...
There is no figure, you're right, for the on-demand stoplight. Well, the only figure we have is the $4 million, but the $3 million is really somewhat misleading. It's an accurate figure if you're just looking at the construction cost, but it is misleading when you look at the total cost of the project, $5.5 million. I've used roundabouts. I lived in Asia for a while, I used roundabouts, they worked fine. My daughter lives down Ventura, she has a roundabout right in her neighborhood, it works fine. These are in residential areas. The report that you showed me, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe I've seen one on an interstate or a major highway. There are some on exchanges, but I'm just very concerned about putting a roundabout on a highway where people are traveling at, the speed limit is 55. Chief, close your ears. People don't travel 55, though. They travel 65, 70. I don't, of course. The comment was made that the roundabout will slow down traffic. It will slow down traffic, probably to a point of maybe even a hindrance as opposed to a safety issue. The on-demand stoplight will also slow down the traffic. So we're looking at, really, it's a safety issue. Both will slow down traffic, both will reduce the impact of serious collisions. It's whether we want to take this money and put a roundabout on a highway coming into our city. The idea of possibly losing the funding, you know, I'm a person that says, "I'd rather lose the money and not have a bad project than to get the money and have a bad project put in there." I believe this is a bad project, and I'm going to strongly suggest that this council sends a letter. I believe it should be worded more sternly than the letter that we have in our packet, possibly using, as Mr. Lynn stated, maybe some of the wording by our traffic consultant on the general plan. I'd like to have it stated that our concern is, number one, public safety. Safety and convenience for the citizens and our commuters, and also state that we feel a roundabout is an unreasonable solution to this. It is a solution, but it's, I feel, and I hope the council feels, that it is an unreasonable Anyway, I'm going to, after we hear the rest, I will recommend that we do in fact send this letter. Now, just so everyone realizes, I'm sure everyone in this room realizes, that this is not a city decision. This project is a Caltrans project, all we can do is we can make our feelings heard, but whether the roundabout is put in or not, this is not the city's decision, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lingle. Is that a motion on your part?
I will make a motion that we, as a council, as a city, send a letter to Caltrans, a more strongly worded letter. Maybe we can get together with the traffic consultant, or we can get someone to make it. it more strongly. But the wording that I had put in there, talking about the unreasonableness of this roundabout, we want to make sure that there is safety, but also some convenience for our citizens and commuters. So, yes, I am recommending that we do in fact send this letter.
Thank you. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
And then discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yes. Ms. Brougeot? I was at both the meetings that Caltrans held, and this room was packed with people. Mr. Homedal was here also, there also. And most of the people had serious concerns about the roundabout, especially the farming community. They were very concerned about it. They didn't want it. This room, as I said, was full of about 50 people, and they did not want it. Caltrans made the decision, and this is the way it's going to be. I think it's a wrong decision. That's why I seconded the motion. I commuted for five years to Goleta on that road, and it's a very dangerous road. And I think Mr. Lynn's, some of Mr. Lynn's suggestions about making it easier visibility might be a possibility. I still think a signal would be best, and I, we have traveled in Europe and tried to go around those roundabouts. And of course, if you don't read French or something, you really go around, and you really go round about many times. And those are very big, and they are in the middle of highways, but the people there know how to drive them. There aren't, isn't any farming equipment on there or big, well, there are big trucks on there, too, but they're much, much bigger than this roundabout they're suggesting. So I do agree with the motion. I think it, I'm sorry we didn't get on top of this a couple of years ago when this thing first popped into the, on the radar, because it has been talked about for a couple of years. I know at the SB CAG meetings. But I think to word it differently, and I would strongly suggest that we use the traffic consultant from the Rincon consultants, so that's what I have to say.
Ms. Marnder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding the report that you were talking about. Was this report generated by engineers that designed roundabouts?
That's right.
So it's somewhat of a, hate to say, a lobbying type of report, or no? I mean, it's not an independent agency that is stating the roundabouts? I mean, I would like to know if there is an independent agency out there that is saying the roundabouts are safer. I haven't heard that yet. Perhaps, I am not clear whether Caltrans has been strong on that stand, and maybe Mr. Bean can correct on that. But again, you know, I don't know about the validity of this report. It does state?
No, it was something that I got to educate myself. I went out and did some research on.
Okay, okay.
It was the experts that do design them. Your comments, if there's a conflict of interest, you know, I could say that if a doctor recommended Hopkins Heart Surgery for me to save my life, I shouldn't believe him because it's a conflict of interest because he wants to do the surgery.
Thank you, sir.
I think, you know, I solicited these people, and I asked for their comments, and I've had. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, to begin with, I don't understand why we're even talking about this because it's in the county. We're second-guessing Caltrans and their personnel. Obviously, they feel strongly that this roundabout is the way to go. I had reservations about the roundabout also until the convention in San Diego and had the opportunity to talk with several people down there and look at the designs and the statistics. The statistics, you know, aren't only as good as the pencil, but the statistics that I saw and have gathered indicate that the roundabout is safer, is a lot safer than a controlled or traffic light. And, you know, several statements, you know, made about commuting to Santa Barbara. If we're upset about a roundabout, why in the world hasn't this council, over the last 30 years, been concerned about Highway 1? I don't understand it. I mean, Highway 1 is a death trap. It's almost as bad as Route 46. I dare anybody to drive down Highway 1 between 5:30 in the morning, actually, you start about 4:30, 4:30 in the morning to 8:30 in the morning, and not count at least a dozen violations by the time you hit Highway 101 or US 101, unless you're one of the violators. Literally, Highway 1 is a whole lot worse and dangerous than 246 ever was. And I worked that road for almost 25 years with the Highway Patrol. So I don't agree with the fact that 246 is a dangerous road. And again, I just don't see us, I'm sorry, we're trying to second-guess an organization that that's what they do for a living, Caltrans. If it was at the city limits of Lompoc, okay, well, maybe we have an issue because it's on the boundary. This isn't on the boundary, so I'm going to be in a positive to it.
You're right. Mr. Lingle?
Just one last comment. Mr. Durham, it's the argument that Highway 246 is a dangerous, I'm not arguing that Highway 1, I don't think that's in the conversation right now, but 246, in this report, it states that the collisions on 246, I believe it says, are something like four times the national average, the collisions at that intersection. So I believe, if you want to believe Caltrans, the experts at Caltrans, it is a dangerous intersection. Something should be done.
Exactly, exactly. And they are doing something, and they have chose to do the roundabout instead of a traffic light. That's the only, Councilman Lingle, that's the only reason. We're trying to second-guess an organization that obviously has spent a couple, three, four years looking into this, and we're second-guessing them. And I think we're out of line.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I guess I have one last question regarding the roundabout. You know, the issues that I have with it, I guess, are that they are on a road that has a lot of trucks, and it does have a lot of agricultural equipment, and I don't see how they're going to go about in a roundabout. I always think of a roundabout on an urban setting, not in a rural setting. So I have difficulties picturing a roundabout in a rural setting, and I would consider that to be that, even though it's a major highway. So just, and I, you know, and I'm having difficulties deciding which way to go along here because I'm not an expert in traffic, and I would like to think that Caltrans knows what it's doing. Can somebody give me some background of what, specifically beyond the statistics and the cost? Any other reason why Caltrans chose the roundabout? I am asking Mr. Bean.
I don't know. We actually have Caltrans' whole PowerPoint loaded on the computer that was shown in this, April of 2009. You asked for some reports earlier because Mayor Siminski's was by someone that designed them. But in this PowerPoint, there's some things quoted from the PowerPoint. I'm quoting from Caltrans PowerPoint. In a 2004 Kansas Department of Transportation study, 11 intersections were converted from a signalized or controlled stop to a roundabout. The average vehicle delay was reduced by 65%. The average vehicle stop was reduced 52%. In a 2008 Federal Highway Administration, that's FHWA, study involving both transportation professionals and volunteers from the public, roundabouts were chosen as one of nine proven safety countermeasures. Of the nine, roundabouts were the only ones picked for a countermeasure for an intersection.
But my original question, my original question is, is it rural or is it urban? I mean, I think there is a big difference in here. If we can have?
My understanding, they've been used in both settings, not one as opposed to the other. For the higher speed, the bigger they are. Caltrans, at their April 2009 presentation, they showed pictures of how trucks could maneuver with the size of a roundabout that they were going to build. They showed the geometry of that. They showed how that if a great big, large piece of equipment came through there, it could ride over the rolled curbs. They weren't raised curbs. They were rolled and paved up a certain portion. So they did answer all those questions, and they did report several different studies throughout the United States.
Thank you.
Before we vote, I am going to vote against the resolution on the floor also. I did, on my own, go look at, go talk to engineers and look at what they presented. I did also, I'm very aware of the funding situation that Mr. Bean mentioned. Caltrans is already kind of upset at Lompoc because they moved the rest of the improvements on 246 out to 2027 to 2028. And we argued loud and long that there looked like there would be some money left over after they finished 101, and there was enough, and we asked that Caltrans to split the project in half. They said that that's costing them quite a bit of additional money, but they will do half of the project starting in two years rather than waiting to 2027. But they're already kind of upset because we, we're costing them more money in splitting that project. I suspect that, as Mr. Bean indicated, that if we make it strong enough where they, and they decide not to go with a roundabout, that there won't be any improvements on that highway for another 15 years. That's just, the fights right now and the arguments right now over money for road projects all over the state are very, very, very significant. So let's go back, Ms. Marnder wants the last word, I guess.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that, yes, I'm going to vote against it as well. And the reason for that being is twofold. One, it is out of the jurisdiction of our city, and therefore, I'm going to refer it to the experts. And as the experts have said, I just have to leave it at that. If it was within the jurisdiction of the city, I would look into it further and look for, you know, more independent stuff. But this is outside of our city, and I leave it to the recommendation of the experts. So I will be voting against sending a letter.
Other comments? We have a motion before us in a second. Let's cast our vote. Motion fails. Moving on, under, I'm sorry, did she, what? Oh, I thought you said something. There's a second request by Councilmember Lingle for a discussion item tonight, filling a possible vacant council position. Mr. Lingle, we had a staff report that described the situation in the code. Is there something more you'd like to add?
Well, after reading the staff report, I think Mr. Panoni reminded us of something that no matter what we do this evening, the incoming council will be able to make their own decision. So I don't know if it's even worth, I mean, I don't even think it's worth discussing at this point. There's going to be at least one new member on the council. That new member should have a voice in what's going to happen, and they will have a voice. There could be possibly as many as three people. So after reading their report and Mr. Panoni reminding us of, no matter what we do tonight, it makes no difference. So I'm going to suggest that we just pass over this and not do anything else.
I second that.
All right. We'll consider this item pulled. I guess there's no reason for public comment on it. Are there any other council requirements or announcements? Mr. Durham?
Well, I've got a couple here. On the 21st of this month, the city administrator, Laura Barcelona, and myself were pleased to attend the Vandenberg Air Force Base Awards Luncheon. And it was a very well-attended event by all the communities. Vandenberg, as usual, was very, hospitality was fantastic. Food was great. So we had a great time, and saw a lot of awards given to young men and women that really kind of warm your heart. Then Parks and Rec and the Urban Forestry Group had Make a Difference Day on the 23rd, Saturday, and we had so many people show up that they were showing up at Parks and Rec about an hour and a half before due time because we had so many people show up to plant the trees, they were all in the ground. So I want to thank the community of Lompoc for stepping up and coming out. It was an outstanding turnout. Then the Parks and Rec also put on a senior health expo at Trinity Church. We didn't quite have the turnout that we had hoped for, but the people that did come out had a lot of opportunities to obtain information from different organizations throughout the county that can help them, well, I mean, from their car. They even had a little program called Car Fit. Of course, I asked the coordinator, I said, "Well, if I don't fit in my car, does that mean you'll buy me a new one?" So they said no, but anyway. But we had a good time there. Then, speaking of good times, I, and I'm sorry Pastor Bernie Fetterman left because I wanted to say thank you to the Four Square Church. They put on a block party for Halloween that was fantastic. I didn't think we could outdo last year's numbers, but we did. It's estimated that we had over 3,500 show up for the block party. Last year, we had about 3,000. So it was wonderful. It was a safe zone. The kids had a ball. The adults had a ball. The only problem was our climbing wall failed us. We couldn't get that stinking engine to start, but we've gotten that fixed thanks to ASCO. So we're, I'm proud of that. Something coming up on November 12th, and if you're available to help out, step up because it's the big game between Lompoc and Gabriel. And after the game, again, the Four Square Church is giving an after-game party where all the food, beverages, everything is free, and it's going to be held at the pool, the aquatics pool, and YMCA parking lot area. And it's going to go from 9:00 at night until 1:00 in the morning. So take no dose with you if you come out to help. But it's a great event. We have a ton of kids out there, and we've never had an altercation. We've always had nothing but great times and good fun. And again, I want to thank the Four Square Church and this community for doing what they do, and thank you.
Mr. Durham? The council remarks at this time. We'll move to oral communications. Again, please direct your comments to the city council regarding any consent calendar items at this time or any other items of business that you may want to talk about. We have five minutes. Much the likes. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember, my name's Dwayne Homedal. What I'm here about is, and I already talked to a couple of council members and also the Lompoc record, is the comments by the mayor of Santa Maria on Channel 12 on Friday night, which is obnoxious, Larry always is. I've known him for 25 years, so he's for Santa Maria. What I'm saying is that this council, now, you've got roughly anywhere from 200 to 400 people a day possibly coming to Lompoc unless they make some changes and keep that one open. But DMV are going to come over here. They said in Santa Maria, it's 450 a day going there. They're going to go there to Santa Maria. We should be advertising Lompoc and tell them what it is and thank them for coming over and be nice to them. But when he made that comment, he said, "We got 100,000. They're going over to a town of 40,000 in a very derogative term." The mayor of Santa Maria is used to doing that. But I, and also, I did call the paper and I called a couple of council members, but you should take a lead on it from this council welcoming the people from Santa Maria coming over starting November 8th. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Homedal. Anyone else care to speak? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the oral comment period and bring it back to the consent calendar. We have a substitute set of minutes for the Tuesday, October 19th meeting. We have two items on the consent calendar, minutes and expenditures only. What are the wishes of the council on those items?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar with the correction made by the city clerk earlier, so the revised minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion, comments on those items? Let's cast our vote, please. That motion passes. Now, under unfinished business, we have the adoption of a resolution to reduce the mayor and council's vehicle reimbursement, total compensation for the job. Ms. Barcelona?
Honorable mayor and city council members, Resolution Number 5680 Parent 10, reducing the mayor and council members authorized vehicle reimbursements before you for consideration. the mayor and council members authorized vehicle reimbursement is before you for consideration. At your meeting of October 19th, council unanimously directed staff to bring to council a resolution reducing the mayor and city council vehicle reimbursement amounts to reflect a total reduction of 7.5%, reducing the reasonable per-mile travel reimbursement for council based on 10.87 miles per day and 16.8 miles per day for the mayor. These newly set per-mile travel reimbursement rates achieve the requested 7.5% reduction. Staff recommends city council adopt Resolution Number 5680 Parentin. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Barcelona. Are there any questions? I see no lights lit here. We'll open this for public comments. Anyone in the public like to comment at this time? Mr. Buscaran?
Hi, Mark Buscaran. I had a question on the mileage, if it's 10-point whatever cents per council member. Is that automatically multiplied by seven and added to the payment that each council member receives? Or do they actually, do the council members actually have to put in a request for reimbursement based on actual mileage? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll answer that at the closing of the comment period. Anyone else like to comment on the item before us? I'll close the public comment period, and I'll bring it back, and I'll answer that one. That is an average. It is, it is automatic. It was determined that that's a fair assessment. And that is for in-county mileage, and it can change. One meeting with the Board of Supervisors in Santa Barbara is 120 miles round trip, you know. So, it's merely listed as an average, but there isn't any request for it, and it is shown on my W-2 as compensation, and I have to justify the mileage at that time with annotation in my, if I'm taking it as a deduction with annotations on my calendar where I've driven and such. We have the item before us, is what are the wishes of the council on the item? Mr. Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to, again, thank you for your simplifying this. I think your suggestions made a lot of sense, and I'm glad we took that into, so, again, thank you for your simplifying it. With that, I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation or the resolution as presented.
We have a motion?
I second that.
And a second? Any other comments? Okay, let's cast our votes. That motion approved unanimously. Unfinished business, item number six, Ms. Barcelona?
Mr. Mayor, council, I will be presenting this report. And Ms. Bartels will be available to answer questions. Honorable mayor and city council members, Resolution Number 5681 Parentin amends the classification and compensation plans to delete the Human Resources Director job class and salary range and includes the proposed Human Resources Manager job class and salary range and approves the position allocation and reclassification change in the city administration department's budget. At your budget review workshop meeting on September 21st, staff proposed the Human Resources Manager job class and reclassification of the principal human resource analyst. Following council discussion at the meeting, council requested staff return to council with the necessary documents to downgrade the Human Resources Director classification to Human Resources Manager, reclassifying the principal human resources analyst. Thus, the Human Resources Manager job class would be allocated at a salary level lower than the abolished Human Resources Director. As a result of the recent consolidation of the Human Resources Director, I mean, department with the administration department and the elimination of the Human Resources Director effective June 30th, 2010, the Human Resources Department became a division within the administration department. Because this newly created division does not have a manager classification, the incumbent principal human resources analyst has assumed duties of a manager to carry out the day-to-day management of the division. The incumbent administers the complex human resources management activities and program, including employee, employer relations, labor negotiations, workers' compensation administration, and employee benefit administration. The proposed Human Resources Manager job class is distinguished from the analytical and technical staff job classes within the administration department by its more specialized knowledge of human resources laws and regulations, human resources practices, collective bargaining, and employee laws and regulations, its supervisory authority, and its decision-making accountability related to human resources employee relations practices. This manager job classification is distinguished from the deleted Human Resources Director job class in that the manager is a division-level position compared to the director class, which is an executive-level at-will position. Adoption of Resolution 5681 Parentin affects the deletion of the Human Resources Director from the classification and compensation plan and establishes the new class specification of Human Resources Manager and the monthly salary range of 6,264 to 7,614. The reduction of the Human Resources Director classification reduces the staffing level from six to five personnel. The job description for the proposed Human Resources Manager job classification is attached to the resolution, and staff respectfully recommends city council adopt Resolution Number 5681 Parentin. And this concludes my report, and I'm available to answer questions, as well as Senior Human Resources Analyst Jeanette Bartels is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time, Ms. Barcelona? Ms. Roger?
Are we going to have to go out and advertise for this position, or are we doing it in-house?
This is a reclassification.
Okay, so, Ms. Flambe?
With adoption of the resolution, that'll affect the reclassification.
Good, because she's doing an excellent job.
I agree. Thank you.
And let me summarize, and I think that we can move on with this item. Seeing, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to comment? Okay, I will comment that the, this is an action that, this is the finalization of an action that we took when we approved the budget last year. We eliminated a number of positions in the city, and they were, those positions were not all, the rank-and-file, the worker positions, we did, made a lot of adjustments in staff and eliminated a lot of staff, management, and directors' positions also to try to live within our means. In this case, 16% reduction in the, in the number of personnel in the HR department and elimination of the director's position and reducing that to a manager's position to supervise that department. And this is the formalization of it, and the person that has been filling in and leading that department, even though it hasn't been a part of her job description, as Ms. Roger pointed out, has done an excellent job. And it's that very kind of a situation where we have the reclassification without competition. So, Mr. Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo Ms. Roger and your comments. She has been doing an excellent job. I don't think we miss the expertise of the director at all. And I was extremely impressed with the qualifications required for the position. This is really a professional. The knowledge, the education, the experience is something that, I mean, you don't take someone off the street and do this. It's very impressive. And I think we are definitely making a step in the right direction. We're eliminating a director's position, we're saving money, and I believe we're in, the city is in very good hands with this individual. So, I'm going to support their resolution.
You move to approve the resolution?
Thank you. Yes, I will move to approve the recommendation as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, the motion?
I'll definitely, I'll definitely echo that and second the motion. She is just one of many that I've had the pleasure of working with over the last several months that, in my opinion, I'd hire in a heartbeat if I had the money.
No other comments? We had public comment period. Let's cast our, we have a motion and a second. Let's cast our votes. And that's approved. Moving on, the next item is written communications. Do we have any written communications to read, any written communications to report? Oral communications, two more minutes. Anyone like to speak? Don't you dare. No one speaks? Final council redevelopment agency requests, and I have to. It's state law. Okay, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. I did represent the city at the power agency meeting, two days in Roseville last week. Couple of significant items on the agenda. One, we looked at the financial condition and the interest rates right now, and we directed the finance department to refinance $100 million of bonds that were used to build part of the dams and power plants. That will save Lompoc $7,000 to $10,000 a year over the next 20 years because we'll be able to reduce our contribution. It'll save the overall agency close to $100,000 to $200,000 in the refinancing of those bonds. Most of the agenda was taken up in giving instructions to staff on how to prepare the budget for the upcoming year. The NCPA has a budget of over $300 million a year, and among the directions we gave staff was to find a way to see at least a 10% reduction in the amount spent on consultants and advisors. So, we'll see, we'll see the results of that when the budget comes in next March, when the first budget comes in next March. That's all I had to report on that item. Ms. Marner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to comment regarding the oral communication with the Santa Maria mayor's comments. I did hear them, and I thought they were rather rude. He furthermore talked about that little town, Lompoc, and it was actually, and he was very annoyed and very aggravated, and I thought it was quite unprofessional. I don't think we should be referring that way to any town anywhere. So, I would like to ask the mayor to actually call Mr. Levinino and tell him, you know, please, apologies are needed. Perhaps maybe the next mayor, if Mr. Samenski won't do it, but I think he needs to stand corrected. Thank you.
Comment taken. I will report back on that conversation. No other comments? Nothing else on the agenda? We stand adjourned.